Okay, it being 7:00 PM, I'm going to open the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for January 21st, 2021. I do want to make an announcement prior to starting the meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided in the order. All votes will be taken by roll call. Please make sure that you speak clearly. Anyone from the audience that's going to be recognized to speak must provide their name, and I am going to take, I'll have Joanne note the names of the board members present. That would be myself, Alan Diaz.
Gordon Andrews.
Rick Mary.
Amy Altrout.
Okay, and I believe that's it. Okay. Our first order of business is going to be a discussion relative to meeting disruption that happened at our last meeting. This disruption is pursuant to the Mass, this, the language that we're going to be discussing is pursuant to the Mass General Law Chapter 30A, I believe, Section 20, Paragraph G. At this point, I'm going to ask Attorney Lawrence Mayo, who's Town Council of the Town, to give us a brief overview of that section of the law.
Sure. Thank you, and I'll just note, again, I was asked to attend tonight just to give a brief overview, if not interpretation, of General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. That particular section, Section 20, is really the state's open meeting law, if you will. Again, I was asked to come in because, you know, there's been some disruptive behavior, so I'm told with respect to previous meetings. And again, I'm just here to, you know, give you my interpretation of my outlook on how Chapter 30A may apply here. You have to take into consideration Section 20, Subpart G, in the context that the chairman is the presiding officer at the meeting, at the planning board meeting, or at any other meeting of a public body in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He presides and regulates over the meeting. He decides all questions of order, and he makes declaration of all votes. Most importantly, I think, in this particular context is that nobody should speak or address the meeting without first having leave of the moderator. Now, Subpart G to Section 20A states in pertinent part that no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Now, certainly, in the context of Zoom meetings, you know, a chair is not going to order a constable to remove somebody from the, from the meeting. There's no need for that. What I would, the way I would interpret that provision in the context of Zoom meetings is that it would allow for the chairman to ask the host of the meeting to mute the disruptive party, to prevent further, to prevent further interruption and to allow the meeting to proceed as it should under the direction and control of the, of the chairman. Now, again, asking a host to mute, in particular, another board member, I think, is somewhat of a drastic step, but if the chair feels as if he can't control the meeting because of the disruptive behavior or conduct of a meeting member or anybody else, that is a measure he can take to control the meeting. You know, after clear warning, if that particular person at the meeting doesn't contain or restrain themselves from speaking when not recognized, then that is, again, a step that the chairman can take, and it's authorized by law. It's been used in the past. It's enforceable. It's there for a reason.
Can I add something to that?
Yes, you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, okay. Attorney Mayo, are you, you finished with your presentation?
At this point, yes.
Okay, I'm good. Just, I'm going to be, we have a heavy agenda. I didn't expect this to be a question and answer period for Attorney Mayo. Attorney Mayo, do you object taking a few questions, or would you prefer to just make that presentation, and we can withhold our questions for a further meeting?
I will take a couple of questions. Again, you know, the genesis of all this, or the purpose, again, is just remember, all board members, the chair is, is in control. You elected the chair. The floor is his unless he recognizes another to speak, and, you know, a civil discourse is what is intended to take place at public meetings. And that's, again, the purpose of the law. But yes, I'll take any question anybody has.
Gordon, your question?
Yep. I have a couple of questions. So number one is, the chair has the right to shut off a member?
If the chairman, in his sound discretion, feels as if a member is being disruptive and that disruption won't be quelled, then at some point, he can, he can ask the host to mute the member.
What, what requirements are there for that to be disruptive? If somebody is speaking as a member, the chair doesn't like what he's saying, that doesn't give him the right to shut the member off?
Yeah, again, again, I'm getting into the question of disruption, or the point being somebody speaking out of turn. It isn't related, if you will, to, you know, the, the...
We have civil rights to say our piece. That's why we're elected to the board.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but it's also a question of allowing the chairman to properly and smoothly conduct a meeting.
Okay, do we have...
Well, the chairman doesn't have the right to speak over anyone else either. Once he recognizes someone, they have the right to speak their piece, their whole piece, and he doesn't have the right to shut them off. We're members of the board. We all have the same power. The only power he has is to run the meeting. That's it.
I think that's an accurate statement you're making. The chairman, just because he doesn't like what maybe, what somebody may have to say, the content of what they're saying or speaking isn't disruptive. It's the speaking out of turn. It's the talking over each other that I'm getting at.
Correct, and that goes for the chairman as well. The chairman doesn't have a right to speak over anyone else because he's the chairman.
I would agree with you. I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Yeah, he recognizes someone. He has to give them the right to speak. The members sit back, they wait for the opportunity, they get recognized, they have a right to speak. He has no right to speak over them as well.
Okay, is there anybody else that has any questions? I mean, I think we're in agreement with part of what Gordon said. Any other board members? Having heard none, Attorney Mayo, thank you very much. We are going to go into our next order of business. I just want to make a statement. It is the responsibility of the chair to maintain order during the meetings, and I'm going to respectfully request that each member be recognized, okay? That we try not to talk over each other, and when you're finished, please don't interrupt. All right, our next order of business is an appointment with Norm Kotash. Correct me if I'm wrong. He's got a project at 934 Plymouth Street. It's a preliminary site plan discussion in, on our agenda, as she did last week, which I appreciate. Pages four, five, six, I guess, seven, and eight are relative to the project that he's proposing. Mr. Kotash, you've got the floor?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Norm Kotash, and I'm here on behalf of Merritt Hill Capital, the owners of the CubeSmart located at 934 Plymouth Street in Halifax. As you can see, I'm not sure, I'm assuming you're looking at the attachments that I sent to Joanne Snow that show the aerial view within red outline of the extension of the two buildings. Does everyone see that?
Yeah, what we, what I have, Mr. Kot, is page number four shows the mass...
Oh, okay.
That starts with the mass movable additional storage structures. That would be page four.
Okay.
Page five goes into some of the construction layout, looks like the design of the building. The page six is the aerial view that you had indicated.
Okay.
And then page seven is some very small print, must be relative to the construction procedure. Page number eight is an aerial view, some sort of a plan of the existing conditions, I believe.
Okay, that's probably the survey, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So I guess, if you look at those red lines, which shows the extension of the two existing buildings in the very back of the property...
Okay, so you want us to go to page eight. Fellow board members, that's going to be page eight. It's going to be a plan showing Plymouth Street to the north, and then a long strip of land with buildings. That's the one you're referring to, Norm?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you again. So rather than putting traditional construction methods to extend those buildings in the very back of the property, there's a new method with these mass units that, as you can see by the pictures, they look just like the current buildings that are there. We can pick the color of the doors and the, and the roof or the gutters and whatnot to match what's currently there. They're built on-site. They're on a grid, four-by-four grid, that sits just off the ground. So there will be able to get some air underneath, but there is a facade on the front which comes down to make it more decorative. So the big plus is being able to get these a little less expensive and more timely than traditional construction. But I want to point out that, and I did send a lot of material, probably, some of that stuff is a little technical. It shows the building construction, some of the wind loads, snow loads. These buildings can withstand the same as traditional buildings, the difference being we can get them in quicker and a little more cost-effectively. And, and this is all being done and being driven by demand from tenants. So, you know, we're almost at capacity. It's just, I use the analogy, it's like having a general store, and most of the, most of your goods on the shelf aren't there. Well, what happens? Your customers go to the next general store down the road. So we need to have some, some products, some inventory for people to be able to utilize the storage. And in storage, I don't want to be labelless, I know you guys have a busy agenda, but storage is very, very useful, not only to individuals who are either moving, and they need to store their stuff temporarily, or the building in addition, or someone's come home from college because of the COVID, and we need to put their items in storage, a death in the family, and divorce, relocations. Small businesses use them for excess inventory to be able to compete regionally, for example, with, with Amazon, so they can keep their inventory at different locations and storage facilities, and have their sales rep go be able to go to those units to be able to try and compete with that overnight delivery. So it's, it's been being driven by demand, and 75% to 80% of the people who utilize storage are within a five-mile radius of that location, which means those are mostly the people of Halifax. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. That's pretty much what we're looking for. We would maintain the same drive aisles as you see now, so we would just literally extend the buildings, wrap the driveways around the outside as well as the interior. And, you know, I'm just looking at that drawing, and I was thinking we could even put maybe a row perpendicular to those along the very back of the property as well. So the stretches wouldn't be quite as wide as the current buildings. They're, they're about 10 feet wide by 20, I'm sorry, 10 feet deep by 20 feet wide, which would mean, looking at 20 feet, the current width of the buildings are actually 25 feet, so you'll gain a little bit more room in the drive aisles from these units. But I'm more than happy to entertain any, any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. What I'd like to do, I'm actually going to start with the way my screen is. Rick, do you have any questions?
No, not offhand. So the, so what, the existing buildings there, what are on slabs?
Yes, concrete slabs.
Yeah, and these, these are just sitting on top of the ground. You can move them around?
Well, they say movable. It's really, it's not very easily done. You have to take the facade off the bottom and come up with a very, very large, heavy-duty forklift to take these off and put them on a semi. So it's not like you can get them and wheel them around. They're not like those portable pods or those units, those boxes, those metal boxes that come on the back of trucks. You'd have to, obviously, there's a little work to be done, but if they had to be moved, they could. The only difference is they sit directly on you with the dirt or asphalt or gravel or concrete that's currently there, and they could be stabilized and fit right in with the current constructions. It's a very new method, probably been used the last five years. It's growing by leaps and bounds because of the ease of, of construction and, and cost-effective, too.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
Okay, Gordon, you're next in line. Any questions?
So these are going to go right on the pavement?
Part of it would be on the pavement. If I, if I recall, the driveway wraps around the current back of those buildings, so a part will be on the pavement. And depending on the length, some may sit on gravel or whatever's back there, and then we'd wrap the gravel or the asphalt around the back of the, of the property to continue the, the current driveway. But yeah, they can sit right on gravel, dirt. That's the other positive about this, is that depending on the terrain, you can adjust these, and they're, they can almost even step them to adjust to the terrain.
So you're proposing more, more driveway?
Yes, that would be correct. So to extend the drive lanes, the three lanes that are there, so they would wrap around those extensions that you would see.
So what are you looking for at this point? A, a site plan approval for this?
Well, I, I guess we were told that we wanted to run it by you, and, you know, the, if you go to the website, Janus International, I'll be honest with you, the way they market these things is that they claim that their, their equipment, and they say you don't need the permission of any, any towns or cities or municipalities, and you can put them in there, and they can go into easements, and they really kind of get you under the radar. But Merritt Hill Capital, the company that I work with, we do everything above board. We work with all towns, cities, municipalities. We want to be right up front, work with them, let them know what we're doing. We want to get their approvals of this. We don't want to just throw something up there. So if they want to be taxed, we can be taxed. We don't mind. They actually sometimes do that to try and avoid taxes. We're not doing that. We are completely above board. We want, you know, the Town of Halifax's approval to have these things be permitted.
And, and you're going to maintain the setbacks that are already there?
Correct. Actually, it'd be greater, because, as I said, these buildings would be up 20 feet wide. There'd be about a two-and-a-half-foot indentation from the current building. So you'd gain a little bit more driveway for ease of access around there, because the current building, I believe, is 25 feet wide. These back-to-back will be 20 feet.
And then this is going to go down close to the drainage basin?
Yeah, depending on how the engineer would lay it out, so that we don't have any stormwater issues, and, and we don't, we have to put up a, any type of retaining wall. We want to, you know, we want, we're going to put whatever is reasonable according to the, any of the engineer drawings.
So then you'd be coming back. This is just a preliminary coming before us now?
Yeah, if, if that's what you'd like, we will do that. Like I said, you just tell us what you, we want to just find out if, A, there are any concerns from anybody on the board, so that we can address those ahead of time, and, and prepare and bring any documentation we would have to for any, any future meeting. Unless, unless the board would feel that, you know, we just have to get building approval, it's, it's up to the board. But, yeah, we can come back to another meeting formally, if you'd like, if that's the protocol. So we'll, I'll leave it up to the board.
And this, this site was approved for another building back there?
Was it?
Yep.
Yeah, it may have been from the previous owners. We're fairly recent owners of the property. That's very possible. I'm not familiar with what was approved in the past. Was it a third building?
Yeah, they were going, they were going for, what do you call...
Oh, that's right. I do remember. A climate-controlled building, correct? That's right. I do remember seeing something about that, and it sat perpendicular to the back of the property, correct?
It sat right at the end of the drive lane.
Okay.
Pretty much right up against the drainage easement, the drainage basin in the back.
Okay. You know, in, in looking at that today, I was just thinking that, you know, depending on what the engineer would say, that may be a third building along where that formerly approved building was, so that you'd be perpendicular to the two extensions, so that it'd be loading only on one side, not the backside down by the ravine. So just the front side of that, and then the two extensions, but it would only be one story, obviously.
Right.
So, you know, it depends on what the engineer says we can do, and what turning radiuses and, and whatnot.
Yeah, but it, but it was approved for that other building that would have been pretty much at the end, and then the drive, drive lanes went down and went in front of that, and it, it went up against the back of the basin.
Okay, we probably would be losing some of the outside parking that's in the very back there, but...
Okay.
Okay, Gordon, all set?
Yep.
Okay, Amy, any questions?
Um, no, I think they've been answered.
Okay, I, I do have a couple. You indicated that there's not going to be any foundation. These are going to be sitting on the ground.
Correct.
Does, is it of your opinion that these would be some sort of a temporary-type structure, an unpermitted temporary structure?
No, we're looking for, for permitting.
Okay.
We want them to be entitled. We don't, if, if that were the case, we would have, would have gone in there like they advertise and, and say, oh, you don't need to get approvals traditionally. It's equipment. You don't have to worry about easements. You could put them in easements. That's not our approach. So we're approaching this as though they're permanent buildings.
Okay.
So they could be taxed as such, they could be taxed as such, too.
Okay, that, that was my next question, because if it's, if this is a, a structure that can be moved by a forklift, it would be sort of a temporary structure. So you wouldn't have any objection if these aren't going to be taxed on a regular basis, and that's the determination the assessors need to make, then you would be, and you would entertain an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes if they could not be taxed as a structure.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not at, I don't have the liberty to be able to just go ahead and, you know, give my okay. But I, but my, I guess, in essence, I am saying that we are agreeing in, in that if, if they are permitted, we would consider them permanent buildings and taxable.
Okay.
So we would have no objection to that, to taxes. So I, I don't know how you'd come up with a different type of payment, other than whatever you, however they would be assessed on a regular basis as permanent buildings, is how they could be assessed for tax purposes.
Okay, that's fine. Does the board have any indication? To me, it seems like he should be going through the site plan process where these aren't going to be structures. I know that there was plans a few years ago for an addition to the front building, that we're going to relocate a portion of that, and that a climate-controlled building in the back, so imagine those plans are still available, but they wouldn't be of any value now. Is the board so inclined to think that he would need to go through the site plan process?
I, I would, this, Gordon, I, I would say yes.
Yeah, I mean, I concur. I'm not looking for a vote, and I would, I concur that you, you need to go through the full, the site plan review process, and you also need to, once you go through that process, you'll need to secure any building permits through the building department. It didn't appear, and I'll open it up to the audience, that anybody has any real objection. And Charlie, I don't know how you raise your hand. Is there any members of the audience that wants to comment on this?
Let me look. There's some stuff in the chat, so let's look at this. Nope, there's nothing so far in the chat about this.
Okay, all right. Having heard none, I, I guess the, the board's inclination is to go through the, the site plan process, which is available, our regulations are available online, and then through the complete building process, building permit process.
Okay, so no apparent objections to the preliminary plan, and we may add that building, like I mentioned. Is there anything you can think? I'm, I'm assuming I'm coming back in front of this very board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody want me to bring anything in the future that you don't see that would be helpful?
Gordon, like I said before, they, they came back in, they did the, the, the building in the back. There's been a couple of different versions that they did, and I don't believe you'd have any issues with the drainage. The drainage easement in the back is huge. So if, if you're just following that line down, throwing a building across the back, I don't really see any, any issue with that.
Okay.
I, I don't either. You might have to include some roof drainage calculations. Other than that, I don't see any issues. Anybody else? Okay, having heard none, Mr. Kotash, thank you very much. We hope to hear from you soon.
Thank you all very much, and have a great evening.
Okay, we are running behind. I believe we... The next item on our agenda is Scott Casa Grande, and I believe Freeman Boynton is here representing him. At least, that's what I was told. Mr. Boynton, are you on? Charlie, he's not included.
Coming on, yep.
Yes, I am here.
You are there, okay. Okay, and you're representing Mr. Casa Grande?
Correct. Scott, Scott Casa Grande, who wants to do a project at 311 Plymouth Street, which consists of adding a garage for personal use. I think we've been in front of you folks a couple of times so far, and there were some outstanding issues that we had to deal with. The first one being that we were asked to look into the necessity of floor drains in the building. We finally got ahold of the plumbing inspector who indicated that we do, in fact, need floor drains, and so we have modified the plans to show the floor drains as well as the tight tank outside the building. Some of the other smaller issues, we removed the parking area from above the, the leaching facility, and we showed the overhead doors on the building. And that's, I think that's about it, unless there's any other things you guys can think of.
I don't. I'm going to open it up to the board. I do have a full-size print. Apologize, I didn't have my video on. I do have a full-size print in front of me. I recall at least one meeting that you attended. We had some concerns. It appears to me that you've addressed them. But I am going to ask the board members that have reviewed this if they got any comments, and I'm going to start again with Gordon.
I, I mean, I just have a, a couple of things. This is the first meeting that I've been involved here, but I have been looking at it, and it just appears to me, this is in, in front of us for a site plan, correct?
Correct.
I just don't think it fits the area. I mean, it doesn't fit any of the setbacks that we have, and the whole intent of the bylaw is to have those setbacks. And I, I just don't see how this whole thing really works. I mean, you're, you're looking to put a building within, it's like 10, 12 feet of the lot line, and everybody else in the district has to be 30 feet, 40 feet off the back. So I, I don't think it meets the intent of the bylaw. It doesn't fit, it doesn't fit in there. That's, that's my basic opinion of it.
Well, it's my understanding that it's necess, it's necessary for us to go before the zoning board to get the relief for the setbacks.
Yes, but under the site plan approval, it's, it's also up to us as to whether or not it fits the area or two. It fits the description of the whole intent here.
I, I think our feeling was that where we're surrounded by other very heavily congested uses, and as you can see on my background here, the, the parking for the Walmart, Stop &amp; Shop... as you can see on my background here, the, the parking for the Walmart, stop and shop and all that kind of stuff that we don't feel as though it will negatively impact the area.
I, I understand that, but everybody else in the area is meeting the setbacks. That's my opinion.
Okay, Gordon, um, Rick, any comments?
No, I, you know, I had the same, same thoughts as Gordon. Um, so building out front, the building two there, that, that meets all the setbacks? Will the existing one, the existing buildings on the lot meet all the setbacks? All right.
Freeman, that question is going to you. Um, I, I believe your plan is on a 20 scale. So it, it appears to me that building two, I'm not getting a scale rule.
Yeah, building two is about 16 feet off the lot line.
Yeah, it didn't appear that, um, that meant any of the setbacks, but we don't know when that was constructed. So, okay. So that one doesn't meet. So you have to propose project is consistent with the building, building number two. Okay, Rick, anything else?
I mean, that's, that's what I'm seeing. The other buildings don't meet the setbacks to begin with. Um, like you said, you know, like, like Gordon said, you have to go zoning to get that approved anyway. You know, the floor drain. Um, who determined the size of that? Was that the plumbing inspector or something you came up with or?
Yes, we, we designed that based upon the, uh, the specifications that the plumbing inspector provided us with.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's shown on this plan, a thousand gallon tight tank.
Correct.
I saw another one that's not on this plan, but it showed the inside of another 2500. Is that, is that right?
This, this will be a double wall tank, yes.
Is that what he's calling for? Is that really necessary?
Uh, it's my understanding that it is necessary to have a double wall tank.
Right, huh? So I've done one before in town with just a 2000 gallon tank with a line in it, pretty much cut and dry, you know?
For other uses, I think that's okay, but.
Yeah, um, so that drains, so the whole floor is all pitched into that one spot.
That's correct.
Well, yeah. All right, um, no, other than that, like, like it's like Gordon was saying, the setback, yeah, that's an issue. I'm looking at the existing buildings don't conform either, so I don't know.
Even building, even building one is only 14 feet off the lot line.
Right, right. Anyway.
Um, Rick, you're, you're all set?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Amy, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm just going to try and find out what year the other two buildings were built. So if you bear with me one moment.
Okay, I'll, I'll just speak real, real quickly. Uh, Rick, to your comment on the tight tank, um, there's, there's two reasons for the tight tank. Um, we have a board of health regulation that requires a tight tank, uh, for floor drains. And the board of health was forced to come up with some sort of regulation because of the mass, um, water resources. Um, they required that all towns have some sort of regulation. The regulation in itself is very vague. Uh, I did refer them to the plumbing inspector to see if he had some comments. I did look at the plan showing a thousand gallon tank, you know, in a 2500 or 2500 and a thousand, which didn't make a lot of sense. And I think that some of the information they're getting where this tank is vented through the structure itself. It, it appears to me to be more of a tight tank for septic than it is the floor drain. Unfortunately, that's not under our purview and they're, they are complying with it. And I think it's up to them to try to figure out what they need, um, for the activity that's going to be in the building based on their representations. This is a storage facility for, for personal hot rods, those personal cars. So the floor drain issue, I, I think is sort of minor on that. I think they do have, um, I think they've met their burden, uh, at least from a border health standpoint. I I don't agree somewhat with, with Gordon. I think the building itself, uh, is consistent with the other buildings on the lot. I don't know why that they're so close. Um, it looks like for whatever reason, they're trying to maximize the amount of area there. Um, but again, I think that's a zoning board of appeals issue. Um, if, if this board so chooses to grant them the site plan, then their next hurdle is going to be the ZBA to see if they're gonna uh, allow them to put it there. If they don't and they need to shrink the building, then obviously they'd have to come back to the board. So those would be my only comments. And Amy, just let us know when you.
I'm ready.
You're ready, okay.
Yeah. So building three thirteen was actually built in 1978, so that would have been pre these setbacks. In 1987, number three eleven was built. So that would somewhat explain, um, why three thirteen doesn't follow the setbacks. Um, I don't see on this plan, any setbacks on number three eleven. There's, um, there doesn't seem to be any indication on how far number three eleven, which is the front building where Borhak is, that doesn't show any setbacks. But I would have to say that, you know, pre-existing is different than building something new. So I would agree that the setbacks have to be there.
So having said that, um, where, we're not, it's not our purview to, um, decide on the setbacks. What do you, what's the board's pleasure as far as the, the site plan process?
Can I continue?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you had, I heard the pause.
Nope. So I basically was stating that the site plan we look at has to be under the intent of the bylaw. And that is making sure that they have frontage setbacks and numerous other things that are in chapter 167 and therefore it is part of what we look at. And I believe that to get a variance, you need to have a hardship. And I don't see what the hardship would be to put in a personal garage. I'm done.
Okay. Okay, having said that, um, I, I, I agree, Amy, with the setbacks. And I, I believe they're going to be looking, they're going to have to get a special permit. I, I don't know that those regulations are under our purview in the site plan, um, process. Uh, I, I don't recall that language in the site plan process, but I'll entertain uh, any motion that someone wants to make, uh, regarding the process or whether we decide that you'd prefer to have the applicant, um, obtain whether it be variances or special permits for the location of the building, uh, and then we can take that matter up. Um, I don't know that the client wants to do that. It's just a suggestion or I'll take any motion that the board wants to, um, somebody wants to entertain.
May I speak?
Sure.
Um, under the site plan, um, approval under section eight, uh, we have a list of things that we look at. And, um, detrimental uses to the site. Convenience and safety. Adequate methods of controlling the water. Provisions of off-street loading. Functions and aesthetic, aesthetics, compar- comparability of the development with the use of existence and the adjacent properties. And I believe that's where it comes in. I don't believe it's consistent with the other properties. Everybody else around there has been maintained to, to build to the setbacks that are on the it, it's a commercial district. Everybody else is meeting those setbacks. We just had O'Reilly's going across the street. They meet all the setbacks. I mean, that's in the same neighborhood. That's, that's the whole intent. And it is under the site plan. So it is something that we need to consider.
Are you prepared to make a motion or would you prefer that the applicant, uh, attempt to get any variance that he needs that comes back? I mean, that's up to you, Mr. Boynton, um, um, but.
I mean, where, where are we at this point on this? Is this a site plan that's been submitted and we're at 30 days?
Yes, it has. Site plan's been admitted, uh, submitted. Um, I did request because of the 48, 45 day timeframe, uh, an extension because the, there was a couple of problems with this, with the septic design and there was a problem with trying to get the information on the tight tank. Um, so he did file an extension. You know what the, it seems to me that, I'm sorry, go ahead then.
You know what the timeframe is that we have left?
We don't, we don't have very much time. So, uh, so.
Hours and days, you know, is that?
I, I, I don't know the days. Uh, Joanne, I, I know that he submitted the, uh, an extension. Was it a 30-day extension? Do you recall?
I'm, I'm looking right now. Hold on just a sec.
Okay. Rick, you lit up the, oh, okay. I don't know if you had a question.
Kind of appears to me as though this is a new issue that wasn't discussed and we really weren't prepared to talk about it. Um, are, are these the same members that, that appeared at the last hearing?
I, I can only say that I, I don't remember when the last hearing was. I know that Amy was here, Rick was there. I don't recall. Gordon had, uh, only, only missed one meeting or so, so it could have been that particular meeting. Uh, and I believe that meeting was at the, um, the school.
Yes, it was.
And I, I, I was not aware. I mean, I looked at the plan. I wasn't aware that, um, and I haven't seen any applications for your special permit. Was it your intent with the special permit? Because looking at the regulations, this, it's highlighted that you don't meet the sideline of setbacks. This size building is going to require a special permit. Was, is, is it in your application for variances from sideline and in rail line along with the, um, over 864 square feet?
Yes, we have every intention to go before the zoning board to try and, uh, obtain relief from the property lines.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
That we have a timeframe that we have to meet and you could be a couple of months to get into the ZBA.
I agree.
You, you might want to, and, and we can, rest of the board can discuss it a bit, is withdraw this uh, without prejudice on a temporary basis. And therefore we're not going to be looking for, uh, continuuses every, every 30 days. Um, and then bring that back to this board with whatever variances you receive or don't receive. You, if you don't get them from the zoning board of appeals, then you're not going to need to say plan review or you're going to narrow the building down to conform. Do you think that's a good alternative? Uh, any board members, Gordon?
I, my suggestion is if you were going to go forward with that, you just give extension. I mean, to refile, that, that's, that's like starting all over again. So I, he would be better off to just give us the extension. If he needs to extend whatever rather than refile, he's already in front of us now.
Okay.
You know, why, why would he want to start all over again? That would be my thought.
The, the only, the only issue then might arise. And then if, I mean, we can extend it. I, I have no problem with extensions. I have no problem with withdrawing. If you did have to, because of the zoning board of appeals, reduce the size of this building, then you would have to refile. And I don't believe if you withdrew it without prejudice, um, that we would make you pay the additional fee. But I'll take whatever advice, uh, the board has. So Rick, you got any input on this?
No, I think, I think you guys covered it all.
Okay, Amy?
Um, I can read what Joanne has come up with in the chat.
Yeah, okay. I don't know how to do chats, so go ahead.
That's okay. So on January 5th, Scott Casa Grande requested a continuance till tonight and waived section 167 dash 28, section D. So that means that he is asking, I would imagine, that oh, okay, so he, in 167 28, which is the site plan, D is failure of the planning board to act within 45 days of the filing of the application shall be deemed approval of the application. And he waived that. But I would just recommend an extension instead of, um, withdrawing. That would be my idea. It would be the better way to go. And maybe redraw to be within the lot lines because if my memory stands correctly, but this was a while ago that we were in person, um, I think that it was stopped being looked at to go to the board of health for a septic system redesign due to driving on a leaching field. And that's why we stopped looking at it, I believe.
You're, you're absolutely correct. Mr. Boynton, it's, um, it, it, it appears that, um, it would be to you and your client's best interest to, or we should continue this uh, until after you go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, makes sense.
If, um, you want to, us to do that, we can pass over to this, um, temporarily and that you would need to get, um, the request into the office, especially if it ends today. Uh, you need to get a request in for an extension and waiving those requirements.
Okay.
Is the board, the rest of the board okay with that, looking at this after the ZBA?
Yeah, but I mean, we need to get something tonight if it runs out tonight.
Well, if he, okay, I'm thinking that if he, if he withdrew this, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, we wouldn't be charging many additional fees. He would just refile and the bell would start tolling when he files. That's my thoughts. May, maybe I'm incorrect. Uh, maybe somebody can help me out with that. Versus continuing the matter in every 30 days, um, he can refile. But if we're at the last day, Mr. Boynton, then, then I would think that we'd allow you to make a a personal request for a continuance and follow it up with one in writing tomorrow. Is the board okay with that?
I believe it needs to be in writing tonight. Somebody's got to sign it that has the authority to sign it.
Sounds to me as though Joanne can, uh, send a letter of mutual agreement for extension to Mr. Casa Grande this evening and he can sign it and send it back. I think, I think it makes the most sense to extend it, but at the same time, I would think that zoning board is going to want some sort of comment from you folks in regards to what you think of the site plan, the septic, the drainage and all the rest of the issues. And obviously pointing out the, uh, your concerns over the setback.
Uh, to other members of the board is, are there any other concerns with the site plan other than the building setbacks? Gordon?
Um, I mean, the drainage, drainage looks fine. We don't get into the septic. That's another board. The parking that's already out there is there's already parking there now, right?
Correct. And it's, it might, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Boynton, I believe that the, you're going to I believe that the, you're going to, some of the packing is going to be eliminated, some new stuff added. And it's all going to be a gravel base. And if my memory is correct, your drainage couch are all based on having that previous type surface.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. So you, you, you're right, Gordon.
I mean, you know, the main concern is the, the building.
Okay.
What is the height of the building? Do we know?
This, building plans were submitted. Unfortunately, they might not have made it to the, to the Zoom. But I believe in one of the processes, and it, it could have been the Board of Health process. I think we did require a building size. And I thought it had a twelve foot, twelve pitch roof. You had eight foot overhead doors. So is it fair to say that you're going to have an eight foot eve height on the building, the gutter line?
I honestly don't recall, but I can look it up if, if that's important.
Okay. Well, just be prepared the next time. Because I know we had, we had concerns with the doors because it went over the septic system. Those have been relocated because the system wasn't H twenty loading. And I did see a drawing at some point, not a structural drawing, but I did see a drawing that showed the location of the doors. The best of my recollection was that you had an eight foot eve height, which meant that the building height probably in the center was probably going to be twelve or fourteen feet. Wasn't a size building in height, was it?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I, I believe fifteen feet is, is what I recall the building to be.
Okay. Rick, what's your feelings?
No, everything looks okay as far as drainage and all that that I can see. Like you said, just like Gordon keeps saying is the size of the building, you know? It's all just a setback.
Amy, any, any other comments?
Yeah, I think that the only other concern besides the setbacks, which are obvious, was the fact that this is a personal use. And I think we had started chatting about a, this is a business lot and we're doing a personal use on a commercial and that there should be some sort of a deed restriction if it was ever even allowed due to the fact that it can never be commercial. And that was one of the things that we talked about. And it doesn't make sense that you can have a personal garage that won't be commercial on a commercial lot unless there's some stipulation to prevent that from occurring. Because after we, if it were going to be approved, approved it, then how are we supposed to keep it that way? And so that's, that's a little bit shaky to me. And I also would, again, go with the setbacks because the building three thirteen being built in nineteen seventy eight explains very well why it is not within the setbacks of our bylaws, because it was preexisting.
Okay.
Those are my main concerns.
Okay. So Mr. Boynton, I, I think we've got a general consensus that building setbacks seem to be one issue that the board's concerned with. And the second issue, which is the personal use of a garage on a commercial lot, deed restriction. I, I don't see that to be an issue because it's, if you're going to, if you're going to use that for commercial purposes, then obviously it has to be part of the site plan. The intent of the regulations or your special permits, I think would be specific to the type of use that you're going to have. Although we don't have use regulations. But if you're going to say that this is going to be a, a parking facility and a storage facility, then the ZVA is probably going to issue that permit accordingly. If it got converted into a, a, a body shop, then I think you're going to have a problem. I, I think that's the ZVA, VA's issue. But you might want to address that with your client because, you know, one of the, the members does have some concern.
I'm sure the zoning board can condition their approval that it only be used for personal use. And if it's determined in the future that, that it becomes a commercial use, then that could be enforced. Or they could, the applicant could come back and ask to have that condition removed. And it could, the whole thing could be revisited. But we're only proposing a personal use and I don't see why it couldn't be conditioned as such.
Okay. I, I think what I would, what should probably do, I'm going to ask the board to take a vote to allow the, the issue to be continued until such time as the ZVA makes a decision on it. Does that seem okay?
Yep, makes sense to me.
All right. Other board members, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I, I don't know.
Okay, does anybody, okay, that motion would be to continue this matter. You're going to have to follow up on the, on, or you can either waive and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Gordon. I think if he waives the requirement of that particular section, which requires us to make that decision in forty five days, then I don't think you're going to have to continue to keep sending a continuance letter in. It's just my opinion. It's not a legal opinion, so you can weigh that out. But we got a motion on the floor to continue the matter until the ZVA makes their decision.
Is that, we have discussion?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So we, we have, one more, let's do this.
We have, we have.
We have a motion. Do you want a second if for discussion purposes? Or? Only for discussion purposes, you can withdraw that if you, if we, you don't like it.
I can, I can withdraw what, the second?
The second, because we have a motion on the floor, so I need to get a second in order to, to go to discussion.
Okay, second.
Okay, second. Okay, so, and now we're going to go to discussion, so go ahead, Gordon.
Okay, so, so if we're going to get something signed tonight for that extension, we don't need to make a motion to take this down the road because that's what that's going to do. If he's giving us an extension, then we're just extending it out. We don't have to take any other action other than extend it. And we have it in front of us. He goes to the ZVA, he presents, he does whatever, he comes back to us. If, if he gives us a ninety day, if you think that it's going to go out for a couple of months, then he could give us ninety days. He doesn't have to keep giving us thirty days. He could give us whatever he wants.
Okay.
Then, then we don't.
I'm okay. I'm okay with it. It's whatever the board wants to decide. If you want to let him continue, Scott can get that, that letter in today, first thing in the morning. I'm okay.
Well, we need something signed before the meeting's over. That's the problem. Because I, I vote right now to extend this until he comes back. If the days run out, the days run out. That's the end of it.
Yeah.
That's the legal part of it.
Okay. He's, you're going to get the letter in, you know, and that's probably why it might be better if we've got a motion on the floor and we've got it in our minutes that we're going to extend it. And we're not, that, that's the action that we're going to take. I think the board's required to take some action. I, I don't have that section in front of me.
The action could be to accept his continuance.
Okay, so.
You know what I mean?
Why don't we, Rick, if you want to reframe your motion, Mr. Boynton, you're going to ask us for a continuance?
Uh, I'm, I'm kind of wondering if, if Scott Casa Grande waived section one sixty seven dash twenty eight, section D, then doesn't that mean that we don't have a timeline of any sorts? If he waived that section?
Did he waive it until January twenty first? That's the question.
I'm not really sure. I think you'd have to ask Joanne that question.
Exactly.
Joanne, are you still on? I think Amy just read. Amy, can you just read what Joanne said? I think.
I can. And it says, on January fifth, Scott Casa Grande requested a continuance till tonight and waived section one sixty seven twenty eight D. She also said that she can send him a letter of mutual agreement for extension to Mr. Casa Grande. I would feel more comfortable where I don't know how long that section one sixty seven twenty eight, section D was waived till. I would feel more comfortable if we had a letter in tonight. Otherwise, I would probably motion it to fail.
Okay, the, the, that's why I think we're getting back to if he withdraws the petition, then the timeframe is, is eliminated. But that's not my decision, Mr. Boynton. My opinion is that if, if you withdrew it at this point, if you've got to redo a plan according to the ZVA, resubmit it. If you need to leave this plan alone, then just resubmit it. But I think it takes the timeline off the table. But that's only my opinion. You know, I've got other board members that that disagree. It, it's going to have to be your decision. You, you could, you see which way the board's going to go. So whether we get a, a, a letter before midnight or you make a, you attempt to withdraw and we accept that withdrawal.
What, what is the process for withdrawing? Do we need to get you?
You just refile. I mean, I don't.
What I mean, do we need you, do we need to give you a letter in order to formally withdraw our application?
What I would suggest is that, that you, i- if we motion to allow you to withdraw, you just, I think that's going to be sufficient. But I probably suggest that you, you send a letter in because we could mutually withdraw. Hey, hold on.
I have a question.
Okay. Amy, excuse me, Amy?
Yep.
I just saw something at the bottom.
What?
It appeared that that message from, from Scott didn't have a timeline on the withdrawal portion.
Maybe that, maybe that's so, but it's a little bit, it's a little bit ambiguous. It says, it says continuing still tonight, one twenty one, twenty one. So it doesn't specify. Like to me, if I was going to be writing that up, and I am not a lawyer, but if I was going to be writing up that, I would make sure that the waiver had certain parameters on it and it's too ambiguous. So I would, I would say that if he's going to write a letter to withdraw, and I would also add that I don't know how we can waive fees for a refile without a vote. So I would say, and I don't know the legality of that portion of it. So I would say that if he's going to write a letter to withdraw, then why don't we just make it simple and do a letter for, of continuance for, like Gordon said, ninety days. And if he needs to redo it, redo another continuance after that because he hasn't seen the ZVA for whatever reasons, then we would readdress it after that. It just seems logical to me that if he's going to write a letter at all, that he should just write a letter of continuance by the end of the meeting tonight.
Uh, I don't know.
Can I speak?
Yeah, just a little more so. I don't, I, I, for some reason, Scott wasn't available tonight. So I don't know that that's, can happen. I mean, maybe you can shed some light on that.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Go ahead.
Mr. Boynton, would you be able to text into the chat a, a letter asking for an extension and sign it in for, for, for Scott?
As is representative, certainly.
Okay. Simplest.
Okay.
Because the chats are part of the meeting, so they can be recorded.
Does any, any other members have any?
And then I, I would make, if, if that gets withdrawn, then I would make a motion to accept the continuance that they're asking for.
Okay, so we, we have a motion and you, you seconded it. And it was, was it on the continue? It was on the continue.
I, I can't remember at this point.
Rick, you made a motion to allow them to continue?
Yeah, but they, yeah, with the letter. But what Gordon just said, that seems to make sense.
That does, that's it. Okay, so Gordon, is your second stand? You seconded for discussion.
Can you, can you just repeat the motion?
Okay. Rick, you can, I believe what he said is the motion was to allow this entity, which is JSC LLC, to continue the site plan review until such time as ZVA takes action.
Yeah, well, you're saying ninety days or?
I'm saying until they take some action. So if it's.
So there's no, there's no time limit on it? There's no, it doesn't matter?
ZVA, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, you can, you can, if you want to make it a time certain, go ahead. I don't know how ZVA meets once a month. I don't know what they're going to do, if they can get a plan in. And then if they got to revise that plan, let's say ZVA says, no, you need to meet the setbacks. And I'm sure that he's probably going to continue with the size of the building. He redraws that plan, goes back to the ZVA, gets the approval, then he comes back to us. So if you want to put a timeframe on it, that's, you, fine. I, I would suggest that we just continue it.
I, I, I would, I'd like to take the second back and make a new motion.
Okay. All right, so who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the continuance that they're asking for tonight for whatever timeframe that they put on there.
So there's a, there's a motion on the floor. I'm going to be looking for a second.
I'll second that. It sounds good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'm going to be looking for a roll call vote. Gordon, because you're up top, so I can remember.
Gordon, yes.
Okay, Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Okay. You have your, 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 you, you got some guidance on what this board's looking for, Mr. Boynton?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good luck.
And I have the form. I will fill it out and get it back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to drag your evening out so far.
Oh, no, thank you.
That's okay. We'll keep on with our appointments. We have, we had a seven forty appointment for Zero Walnut Street of Form A, and I believe that that application has been withdrawn. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne? Joanne, are you still there?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Yes, he did withdraw that.
Okay, so yes, actually, if you look at your meeting package, it'll be page number ten. So he's withdrawn. All right. Next item on the agenda is we had some business from our last meeting that we just want to get finished up. Basically, they are in the correspondence section of our last agenda. I don't know that everybody has that. There was twenty two emails that went regarding the building inspector regarding cash lane. It was bracket engineering. There were some comments that came in from Mala Webby. There were some emails going back and forth between Penny Palmeroy. And does everybody have that from last week?
I have the packet.
You have the packet. Okay. I can just touch on some of this stuff for members of the public? Or does the board want to try to get into? I mean, I don't have all the emails. I can maybe summarize if some members of the public are interested in it, but, but basically their, their emails regarding industrial way, just continuances for Cube Smart, review status on Amory Engineering, emails regarding Autumn Lane. Does, does everybody, is everybody comfortable that they've read those emails? And then we can move on?
I'm good. All right.
Amy?
I'm fine.
Okay. Last item, the next item on that particular agenda is we had a bill for Merrill Engineering's and land surveyors from that, and I don't know that that made it to this new agenda. But I would need a motion and a second, I believe.
Alan?
Those bills.
Alan, could you just reference the page numbers for us? Alan, could you just reference the page numbers for us?
Okay. I am working on the agenda for the January 7th meeting. That meeting ended abruptly. We didn't finish. So the unfinished items were meeting minutes, which we will get into.
No, no, this page number is at the bottom.
This is on the agenda. So this was last week's agenda, so I don't have a page number on that particular one. It was last week's agenda, and there was a bill. And I recall the situation. Merrill was retained by Don Treany to review Autumn Lane. He paid that, the bill come in, and we're looking to pay for that. We still, or at least I do not know what the status is in Autumn Lane other than there was a communication between Merrill and Treany. And I believe we still need to pay that bill. Amy?
I wanted to let Gordon know that it was page number 43 from last meeting, January 7th.
Okay. If I could make a motion?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to pay the bill for Amory Engineers? Invoice number 15531?
Hold on, Gordon.
Oh, that's the wrong one.
That's the wrong one. Gordon, I have it on the second page below all the emails and the notices sent from the budding towns. It's in that next section, says bills.
The second page?
It's invoice 10622.
And six. On that second.
0622 for $400.
400? Okay, I make a motion to pay. And that was Amory?
No, that was Merrill.
Okay, make a motion to pay Merrill $400 for invoice number, what was it, Joanne?
10622.
Okay. That's it, that's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have, do we have, do I have a second?
Yes, I can.
Amy's second. I'll need to go to a roll call vote. Gordon, you made the motion, so.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. We'll go through the rest of the next agenda so that, I just want to remind those that are signing. I believe it's Gordon and Amy, where this has been a couple of weeks. Maybe you can get up there in the next, no, it's going to have to be early next week to, to sign those vouchers.
Sign the, the bills?
Yes, sign the bills. Okay, we have a couple more, so we'll do them all and then you can sign them all. Okay, that should conclude the January 7th agenda meeting. For discussion items, we're keeping Autumn Lane on for status until we get a status. To my knowledge, there's nothing into the office regarding Pastel Lane. Excuse me, Autumn Lane. Pastel Lane, that project is still in the permitting portion. And I'm hoping that within the next couple of weeks that we have some sort of resolution on that. We will keep the board posted.
Alan?
Yes.
I have a question. We, on the last January 21st, 2021, we also, I'm sorry, January 7th, 2021? Sorry, I'm looking at two different things. We did have the annual report of the planning board as well for 2020 that we haven't finished?
I believe the deadline passed for that. I believe that we had till January 8th to submit that. We took no action. That was submitted.
I saw today that there was another board being asked for theirs, so I don't know.
That I don't know, where did you see that?
In the emails.
Isn't that, isn't that the annual report to be put in the town report? I don't think they have the deadline for the town report yet.
That, that I don't know. All I know is that the memo come down in the email that we had until January 8th. It was on the agenda. It was generic. We added, I added a couple of comments. We sped it around to see if anybody else had additional comments.
Right, that was, that was for January 8th was the deadline. And I had sent it to everybody and I didn't hear any, anything to be added or changed on it, so.
I did add it mine and reported it. I also will say that the beautification committee is still being asked for there, so I don't know why the deadline would already have occurred.
Send you the letter that I have from Pam McSherry that says that the deadline is the 8th.
Let me, let me just make a suggestion. You say you had some comments, Amy, that you wanted to add?
Yes.
Okay, but you didn't provide it?
I did. I edited the copy and sent it in.
Sent it where though?
I edited the copy and it automatically went in.
Went into where?
Where, to where to back up? Well, I did not get it. I didn't get that. I can ask, ask her if Pam McSherry, if she could take it. I could look at it now, but she did send the email that said the 8th was the deadline.
It automatically edited in the email that you had sent us, and that's when I did it.
Hold on, Amy, I'm just.
I mean, not the 8th, whatever the day was that you made the agenda and sent that originally out.
Amy, just for some clarification, because I'm a little confused and I'm sure some of the members of the public. You edited that, but where did you send it? Did you send it to Pam McSherry or did you send it to Joanne?
It's in our planning board email. It was an automatic update of the word that went back to, well, at least I thought it went back to Joanne. But I did it prior to our last meeting.
Okay, I've read all the emails the best that I could. Did any other members see?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't ever send an email to anybody but one person as it's clarified that it can be an open meeting violation to do so.
I realize that, so everything should go through Joanne.
So somehow there's a glitch, but I did do that. So Joanne, if you would ask, that would be absolutely fabulous because I know they're still waiting for the beautification committees and we're not meeting until the first Monday in February.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't get that. If you could forward that to me again, that'd be fine. And I can send it to Pam so that she can see the date on it because I never received that, Amy, sorry.
No, don't be sorry. It's, there's a lot of emails going back and forth. I'm not, I'm just stating what happened.
Okay, so we're going to leave that as status quo. And then depending on what the decision is by whoever does the town report, I think it's the selectmen's office, we'd have to just revisit that at our next meeting if it's, if so be. So Joanne, just follow that up to see if it can be edited. And then if it can be, then you would need to send each member whatever those comments are.
Yeah, if I get, yes, I can do that as soon as I get it from Amy. That'd be fine, thanks.
That's right, okay.
If you wouldn't mind asking and then I'll send, but I could tell you guys what I added.
I'd really, I'd have to have it in writing to send to her. So if you could, yeah, if you could forward it to Debbie.
Yeah.
That'd be the easiest way, I think, so.
I will.
That particular item is, is not on the agenda on the town report. And if I had known prior, then we could have added some. So it's on our other one. So let's just, just send it to her, let her get her out to us, and we'll take it from there.
One more note on that then? Because it says unfinished business, see planning board agenda 1721. So it actually is on our agenda.
Okay. So noted. Okay, next item for discussion is O'Reilly's Auto Parts. And there's a report that came in. I hope everyone got a chance to read that. There is going to be a bill for that down further. So if nobody has any discussion on that, we can continue on to the bill part and discuss it there. Complete Streets Program project list. That happens to be page number. Page number 13. What Joanne had did is took from our discussions what we had suggested that were projects that should be entertained by the Complete Streets Program. And it's my suggestion that we take the names out and that we submit this. She can condense it to make sure that everybody's, that all the areas are covered and we submit this as a board, not necessarily with the names. That's the only suggestion that I would make. Everybody having read that, any other comments?
I'll go ahead, Gordon.
I was just going to say, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Gordon, on page number 13 in our agenda?
Did we talk about the new one?
The, our new agenda, correct. I don't have the old one, so. Page number 13 is the Complete Streets Program. And we, we all made comments. And by the way, I did see the bike signs on Old Plymouth Street. And I'm going to follow that up. They're very old signs because they were put up by, it said the Department of Public Works, which was probably the state. So follow it up to see where that bike path goes. It looked like.
Comes down Elm Street.
And then it goes down.
Down Carver Street, Franklin Street.
Okay, I was going up Elm and I saw it heading towards Pond, but we'll follow that up to see if there's anything that might qualify in the other. Because it was complete streets and it was shared streets. So appreciate that information. The, it's my suggestion that these comments go in as a board. We don't really need to know who suggested whatever. Okay.
Can I say?
Yeah.
When I, it said here, I said sidewalks from Cranberry Drive to Old Plymouth. The ones I was talking about were the residents. They were trying to connect the two entrances, the Cranberry Drive. They came to the board with a set of plans last year.
Okay.
That's what I was talking about.
Right, I believe that there was something in the selectmen that the selectmen are going to be requesting input from town residents as part of this program. Part of the process was for us to come up with some suggestions. And I believe that there's something out there that the selectmen are looking for public participation in suggestions. So I believe that that will probably come up in that process.
That was already all engineered too, so.
Okay, so that might be something. And I'm not 100% familiar with it, so I probably will attend that meeting. But once the selectmen get all their input, then I assume someone, whether it be the highway surveyor, the selectman, or the planning board, will narrow the items down and then proceed from there. But I guess more to follow on that one. But so, Joanne, we can submit this to the selectmen. Please CC the Highway Department and do it. Make sure that everything is covered and as a board. I don't, I don't think we need to vote on that. Anybody think we need to vote, motion on it? Hearing none, okay. Next item on the agenda, Pledge Tree Service, non-compliance with the site plan.
Excuse me?
You're going to recuse, okay, fine. We, we had some discussion on this last week.
Note that for the time.
Joanne, just note that at 8:24, Gordon recused himself from the Pledge Tree discussion.
Okay, 24.
Okay. We had part of this discussion last week. We just want to continue on a bit. We did get a comment late today from a resident. But we have a situation at Pledge Tree where he's non-compliant with the site plan. There are some other issues involved as far as the plans themselves. There's some emails which the board should have gotten last week, but to my neglect, they didn't. Those emails certify that the plan that was submitted to the planning board, okay, were fraudulent. Okay, I didn't want to use that strong term. So I think, and I'm looking for some guidance from the board, is that based on the fact that we have plans that aren't accurate, that the action that this board should take is that we should revoke the existing site plan, which he's not in compliance with, did not follow up with a follow-up meeting on January 31st. And then to revoke that. But I think we need to allow Mr. Clad the opportunity to bring the property into compliance. He's got a timeframe from the fire department to get a site plan. And it's, it's my opinion that we should follow that same timeframe. But he's not in compliance and I'd like the board to decide what they want to do about the site plans. Rick?
Well, you know, it seems like, you know, it seems like a good idea to stick with the, with the fire department's doing. He's going to have to have another site plan. Was Brackett going to drop another plan for him?
That, in the emails, Brackett did say that he was going to draw up some new plans.
That's not going to be right away.
Well, no, I believe the timeframe, and I don't have that email from the fire chief, was the end of February, which, I mean, he's going to take some time to get the, that plan together. I thought the chief gave him a reasonable amount of time. I believe he's made a lot of progress in removing the chips that were there. There's a lot of other issues that, that are not necessarily in front of this board. But we've got a situation where he's not in compliance. He's not in compliance with any plan and he failed to come back in last July. So a couple of courses of action we have is to vote to determine that he's not in compliance and ask him to come into compliance by the same date that the fire department does. So any other comments, Rick?
No. Is that possible for him to come into compliance by then?
Well, realistically, probably not. But.
As long as he's trying.
I think, I think that if there is a plan and he can adhere to some sort of timeframe to get into compliance, I don't think, and I wouldn't expect this time of year more than the amount of material that's there to say, hey, you've got 30 days to get rid of it. And that's, that's not practical. You know, that's, that's not practical. I think what the fire chief asked for was some sort of a plan so that we knew where everything was going to go. And then I think, it's only my opinion, that after that timeframe, after that plan is submitted, then we should work with him to come up with a timeframe, a reasonable timeframe for the completion.
Sure.
So. Amy, do you have any suggestions or comments?
I'd like to ask you how he's not in compliance, please.
Okay, I. We have emails that establish that the plans that were submitted were not prepared by the engineer that stamped them. All right, and this, this area is kind of fuzzy. So we're discussing this, which now it's, it's a public record. So anybody from the Department of Board of Registration can look at our minutes and attempt to try to correct that. So I don't want to get into the legalities. If you look at the emails, we got an email from an engineer that says I did not do the plan. We have, we have another email that says that those plans were in fact altered. Those plans were in fact altered, but the engineer was gonna submit new plans on his behalf. And I'm really don't wanna get into much more detail on that. Those are the facts that we have. Even the plan that was submitted, that's really not the good plan. Doesn't shows the logs in certain places, and they're not in certain, they're not in those those places. So. The question is, is he in compliance or he's not in compliance? He's not in compliance, then we we work with him to try to do what we can to get him into compliance.
Okay, so I would need to answer that. I in order for me to answer that, I would need to know what compliance he's not within. And then my second question would be. I remember last summer that we had a plan. In front of us that had red lines on it depicting a water line. So is that also a fraudulent engineered plan?
You had a plan that said a water?
We had it on, we had it on our agenda. We've we've seen, we've seen plans that have had writing on them. That were not of the engineers. Should so so should we recall those?
I don't think we should recall any of the plans. I think it's clear, it's part of the record, that the plans. Were marked up. We don't know, and I doesn't matter to me, and I'm not gonna try to find out who marked them up. Whether they were marked up prior to Mr. Mr. Clid's buying the property. Previous person might have marked them up, someone else might have marked them up. I I don't think personally that's an issue that this board should deal with. That's a legal issue. If the engineering company is okay with what's going on, and he's gonna work with Mr. Clid. Then I think that we should attempt to work with Mr. Clid to try to bring him into compliance. But any plan that you see, whether it's a red line plan or a plan that has lines drawn on it. Don't represent what's on the ground. I've seen photographs from the from the police, excuse me, from the Fire Department. There were photographs of the property a year ago. And then when the most recent fire, there was more photographs. And if you look at the plans that we have on record, and those plans are in border health, they're in building. And they're in conservation. There's nothing at the site right now, the way it is on the ground, that represents those plans. Nothing. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It really doesn't, but because I asked why it's not in compliance.
Well, I I suppose if you want to, you can you can reach out to the Fire Chief, who made the original determination. That there wasn't any compliance. So I I guess what I'm kinda looking for is that. If he's not in compliance, that. A, I'm gonna ask for a motion, so if he's not in compliance, fine. Well, that emotion passes or fails. And then if he's not into compliance, then I think we should give him the timeframe, same as what the what the Fire Department did. To come up with that plan, and then we should work with him to try to work with him to get into compliance.
I'm of the same sentiment that Rick is, that I think the Fire Department is dealing with it, and we should probably let that occur.
I I don't know that Rick said that.
Oh, I just I just, well, I was just saying the same time, same timeframe, that's what you're saying. They're on a timeframe with the Fire Department, so.
Yeah, as far as it's it's kinda cut and dry, is he in compliance or he's not in compliance? So.
Well, according to the Fire Department, he's not. That's pretty only ones that are really determined that right now, right?
Right, he's determined that. So we can. We can muddy the waters and request the zoning enforcement officer to get down there and do a determination. As to whether he's in compliance, he he is pretty much the enforcing authority for site plan review. But it it's clear that he isn't, and I don't know that we need to waste everybody's time. I just think we need to help him try to get. The place in compliance. That's that that's my feeling, so. Does anybody wanna make a motion that he's not in compliance and we need to work with him? Hold on one second. There is a, there is a comment, but. I think before we get into the motion part, I I will take a comment from. Charlie, I I I missed, I saw something at the bottom of the screen. Charlie, you still here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did someone have raised their hand?
Yeah, Chris W.
Chris W. I know we don't have a motion on the floor. Does anybody in the board object to whatever Mr. Chris W wants to say? Hearing none, can you allow him in or?
No, he's available to speak right now.
Okay, Chris W, can you can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, this is Chris Winowitz from one twenty-nine Circuit Street.
Okay.
I just wanna make a comment. There was a piece of equipment there too, that I've been dealing with the town last year for a noise issue. And we had a planning board meeting, because that's where I was directed from the building inspector and stuff, that that needed to start at the planning board. We had a Zoom meeting, one of the regular meetings, where it was an agreement with Clid's attending. That he would move that piece of machine to a different part of the site. Or put up some type of barricade, you know, the logs or the wood chips, something to stop the noise from coming towards the residences and. That hasn't happened, so I didn't know where that would fall in with future site plans or.
If you want me to comment on that, I wasn't part of that hearing. I I was. I did in fact receive a complaint from a resident regarding the noise, and and I referred that complaint out because it really wasn't a border health issue. So I wasn't really privy. I did read some of the meeting minutes. I don't recall from the meeting minutes that a piece of equipment was supposed to be moved, that might have been part of the process. I'm not sure, but it's my opinion that if if he's not in compliance, that that would be an issue that we would address. To try to get him into compliance. If, that's that's my opinion at this point. It's nothing I think that we can. Really handle now, because we don't really have a good valid site plan. I think when he does his site plan. That and he he's on, I see the name on there, that that he's aware that. There was a noise complaint, and he needs to locate that based on whatever the Planning Board had recommended at that time. And then by all means, participate in that process when we do get some sort of a new site plan.
Okay, so there will be a future process that we can deal with this and discuss it.
That's what I'm trying to determine now. I'm trying to determine that A, he's not in compliance, and then we're gonna refer this. That, you know, try to get, get a timeframe, work with the Fire Department and work with him to bring him into compliance.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to get.
Okay, yeah, because when I had looked into this before with the DEP and stuff, some of their regulations and CMR, it it. It reflects that they want the town to handle it, and it gives the town authority to enforce the state regulations for noise and stuff.
Yeah, noise noise is very difficult. You have to. You know, you have to reach a certain decibel limit, and it has to be over a certain period of time. Town does not have the equipment. No town that I know of has the equipment to do that measuring, nor the personnel to get out there on a. Saturday or Sunday, and I think it was a Sunday is when. That last noise complaint come in. So I know DEP will refer it back to us, but that is something that we should be able to to monitor through the site plan process.
Okay, okay, so I'll look for in the future then, when it comes up?
Yes.
Okay.
Charlie, can we ask if there's, or I can ask if there's any members of the public, anybody participating that that needs to make a comment? I don't know, if you put your hands up or whatever you do.
I'm watching the board here. I don't see anybody else's hands. I don't see any comments.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything in chat.
Nope.
Okay. Rick, and I wanna put you on the spot. Are you prepared to make any sort of a motion, or where you wanna go with this? Based on the conversations?
I don't know, I mean. Like you say, all you can do is try to do the best you can to get in compliance, in my opinion. I know it's not an easy thing to do.
No.
Considering how the place is now. You know, like I said, my opinion is as long as he makes an effort. See what the Fire Department says, and at the end of there.
Okay, so are you gonna make a motion that we we kinda make a. Determination that he's not in compliance and that will work with the timeframe that the Fire Department has for at least the plans?
Mister Allen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yeah, you you gotta identify yourself, please, for the record.
This is Clad.
Okay.
Clad's true service.
Yeah.
So Fire Department gave me ninety days to be in compliance with my law. And the regulations, so and I am working on that, and anybody that drive by. To my property, doesn't need to get in my property, anybody that drives by. It will be seen that we we did make a huge progress getting in compliance. We already removed that whole pile of chips out of there and a lot of wood. And that's what we working on, and we are working on the engineer plan. That will be coming in with the. When we applying for the permit for the building and everything, so that it's working on in progress. But I just wanna, but I just wanna bring up, bring in to the note tonight that. The Fire Department gave me ninety days to be in compliance. And even when he sent me the letter, give me the, given me the ninety days. He made a comment on the letter that we already made a good. Amount progress working to be in compliance. So I just want to bring that up to, you know, maybe help everybody to have their opinion, their thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I think. I did read the letter, I don't have it in front of me, and I think what he asked you to do was to bring it into compliance with the fire code. And I I agree, I've gone by there, and you've made great progress in getting rid of the chips. Our predicament is that you're not in compliance with the site plan, so. My thoughts were to work with the Fire Department. And give you beyond the ninety days. He wants you in compliance in ninety days. What I think this board should be looking for is plans of whatever you're gonna do, okay? Within that timeframe, if he gave you till February twenty-eighth to do that. But I do not expect that you could be in compliance with. A plan that's not really a good plan. So I think we really need, we need to have a good plan from you, and if we get that plan within the ninety days. Then we're gonna have to give you some time after we receive a plan. To bring you into compliance, so. I'm looking for more than the ninety days. The timeframe is, I would expect that you would have a plan to us within the ninety day timeframe. The the fire code situation with the with the Fire Chief. If he wants you to get everything out of there by the ninety days, then that's that's his call and his department. My expectations is that you bring us a plan within the ninety days. You tell us what you're gonna do, how you're gonna situate your logs, how you're gonna locate some of the wood cutting equipment. What you're gonna put in there for mulch piles, what you're gonna have for wood chip piles, all of that stuff. And then we need to sit down and say, look, you've got too many logs, you don't have too many logs. Do you need ninety days, you need a hundred and twenty days from that point? To get your permits and to get the place in order. So. Our process is gonna give you more than the ninety days, but we do expect that that plan will be to us. It'll give us a little bit of guidance so that we can now reissue a site plan on a good plan. Not the plans as submitted. So that's the point we're trying to do. You you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
When did the ninety days start? When was when was that, ninety days from when?
He, Mr. Clad might be able to answer a little bit. I read the email, but I've I've read hundreds of emails. And I thought it was in February that he required you to have a a plan, to bring it into compliance and come in with a plan. Am I correct?
Yes, I don't remember when that did start, but I can try to find.
Okay, Joanne, I know it might be a little difficult, that that email was in such a long time ago, but let him kinda look at it. I I believe it was at the end of February and and.
That was the end of the ninety days?
The end of the ninety days. Well, I think the.
Ninety days, I believe it's March third, something like that. I'm not.
Then that would be the same, that would be the same date that we'd be looking for a plan for, because. Whatever you submitted to the Fire Department. For a plan. Would be the same plan that you're gonna use for your site plan. But it's got nothing to do with the. The fire code. Potential violations or the mulch and the storage of the woods, any of the chapter thirty-one issues. Which is part of the fire code, the CMR, those you're gonna address on the on the plan. But I don't really expect between now and March, when you don't have a plan, especially a plan that has been approved. That you're gonna relocate whatever you got, and I don't think you're gonna be able to get rid of all those logs in that timeframe. Is that a fair assumption, Mr. Clid?
Yeah, the only. Question I would have, why should I get rid of the logs, like a. Most of that, it's a hardwood, firewood, like a.
Okay, just to answer that. We're not asking you to get rid of logs.
Okay.
Okay, under the five twenty-seven CMR, chapter thirty-one of the Fire Prevention Code. You're required to have logs on a plan. You need, you're required to have thirty-foot setbacks from property lines. And then you need to have, I think, a minimum thirty-foot separation between the piles for fire protection. So on your new plan, he's gonna draw those areas. You can take the wood from where it is now. Once you come back to the Planning Board and it's okay with everybody, and you can put that wood in those particular areas. So we don't want you to get rid of any wood, we just want it to be in according to the plan. And then we want it to to comply with chapter thirty-one, that portion of the fire code.
Okay, but that's what we just say, that I have the ninety days to work on that, and that's what I'm doing. So, okay, I just wanna.
So what what my my thoughts are, is that that we should hold your feet to the fire, okay? That the the site plan that you have is no good, and that once you get clear with the Fire Department. You're gonna submit that plan, okay, and then you're gonna comply to the. Legitimate plan or the new plan that you submit. That my clear? And I think that's all we're looking for.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
So. Mister Chairman, this is Chris Chris Winowitz again.
Yes.
I just have one comment. I just heard you saying this could go ninety days or longer. What what about the sounds in the meantime for that length of time, when it was already agreed that he had tried to mitigate it? Or move the machine? Just because like even yesterday, my daughter said they were on remote school, and the sound's coming right through the house, reverberating through the house.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm looking at ninety days, three months, and then longer, that could be like the whole spring.
Okay. Chris, the only thing that I can suggest, and while we have Mr. Clid on, is that. I do not know which piece of equipment makes all the noise. I I'm not sure. I I think that that the, some of the activities that he has there as of right. Under light industrial zoning, and then some of the materials require a special permit.
But under one sixty-seven dash nine, nuisance noise is forbidden, and then the state laws don't. But under one sixty seven dash nine, nuisance noise is forbidden, and then the state laws don't forbid it too, leaving the property line. To nearby. Sensitive receptors, residences.
Okay, I I'm going to agree with that. The the problem is, is trying to establish what's a nuisance noise. It is extremely difficult. Extremely difficult. What's a nuisance noise to you, okay? Doesn't necessarily mean it meets the statutory requirement, and and I can tell you that the statutory requirement is like ten decibels. So you got a wide open area, and to have someone go out there and try to attempt to get ten decibels. Out of whatever machine he's using. And especially if the wind is blowing in the wrong direction, it it's not going to happen. So I I I think from experience that. I don't think he's going to meet that decibel requirement, but I think while he's on here. Uh, and and Mr. Claude, maybe you can shed some light, which machine makes all the noise?
The grinding?
Okay. Now. It's from me reviewing the file. Grinding is not a matter of right in the industrial zone, so any grinding process does require a special permit. If I'm reading the regulations right, um, so. How much more grinding? Do you have to do between the time now and the time we get you permitted properly?
That's basically impossible for me to tell you. It's the file that I have there.
Okay, we 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 have a couple of options. I mean, we can. We can revoke the initial plan that you have and request that you not bring any more chips in or any more firewood. That's going to be detrimental to your business. So my suggestion is that you can. You you don't have a right to run that machine. So Mister Winowitz is absolutely correct. Uh, if he goes to DEP and they want to send somebody down with with a noise meter uh, to take the limits. Then they're more than welcome to do that. We don't have the resources, nor do we have the equipment, but if someone did. Then you're going to be in violation both federal codes and mask codes. I'm going to suggest to you. That you come up with a plan so that you do not aggravate the neighbors with that grinder that you're not supposed to have. Um, I I can't tell you. That not to do it, but I can tell you that if Mister Winowitz went to the zoning enforcement officer. Then that's, he's the one that's empowered to tell you not to do it and to issue a cease and desist. So. I think you really need to. Figure out. Do you want that piece of equipment on there working while you're going through the pending process?
I've been. Right across, like right across from his house. I know, like I have my machine running, and I've been there on my backup truck right in front of his house. With that machine running. And with my window up, my truck off, I didn't hear any sound. And I lowered down my window. I barely can hear like a wood chipper or some far noise.
Okay.
Maybe.
Mister, Mister Claude, we're getting.
I don't want to disturb anybody. That's why I went to a industrial zone instead of being commercial or residential because I. I see everywhere people run business from their home, land, small landscaper and all that. And I did went to through to a industrial zone. So I'm not here to cause any trouble or disturb anybody. Okay, or any residential. But my other questions too is if it's not like a crazy noise or like, like you even say earlier, there's some, you know. Limits and then. If it's commercial hours, like business hours, why couldn't we have certain amount hours we can run those type of equipments? I believe the law also gave. Permits for a certain hours that you can run loud equipment. No? Am I wrong or am I?
Okay, uh, I I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm gonna make a comment, but I'm going to stop you there, okay? I our issue tonight is not whether you're making noise or you're not making noise. Um. What you're saying is that whatever you've got there is not making enough noise to bother any of the neighbors. But you got to understand that you have a piece of equipment that's operating that's not permitted. So based on that alone, you don't have any really rights. I mean, if you had a permitted. Item that was either in a special permit or that the the zoning allowed it by right, all right? Then. What the planning board should have done way back when was to make sure is that the you had some proper screening. But that's really not an issue for us to discuss tonight, and that issue is going to be discussed or should be discussed during the site plan process. But just bear in mind that you are running a piece of equipment illegally. So. And I I could tell you personally that Mister Winowitz is not the only one that's complained, so. But that's not a matter that's that we should be discussing tonight. We're trying to work with you to get you into compliance. Um, what I'm looking for is some sort of determination that you're not, and then we're going to try to see if we can get a a timeframe. Both with getting that plan, which is going to be on the, I think, March third or fourth or the tenth or whatever it is. I got to copy that one now. Um, and then you can file with us, and we will try to work with you to get you. Into compliance, and then there will be a determination made as to whether or not that piece of equipment that's making the noise is even allowable.
So I have a question.
Go ahead. Let's let's stay to the, let's, Mister, hold it, Mister Claude, I want to kind of keep it, keep the time, kind of, can I keep it on the fact that whether or not you're in compliance?
My, I only have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
My grinder is not allowed to be using my property, so I have my wood chipper and all out. All my other equipment, so if I want to run my wood chipper in my. Land as well to grind some logs, am I allowed or not?
I, Mister Claude, I can't tell you that because those are the, those are the items that. Are are discussed during the site plan process, so if.
But you just say my grinder is not allowed.
Is your wood chipper allowed?
Okay.
If 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 the planning board so determines in your site plan process that. They're going to allow you to to run a wood chipper, it's not a wood chipper, it's a splitter or whatever it is, that's all part of the process. That's the things that you apply for. You you got to realize that there are certain things in our zoning that you have a right to do. Those, those things.
Alan.
Yes.
Just so you're aware, two of your members have left.
Okay.
Now down to two people, so technically you'll have to adjourn the meeting. There's nothing preventing a group of people from continuing this discussion. You simply are not at a meeting at this point.
Okay.
My recommendation would be that you move to adjourn the meeting. If you want to continue this conversation with the people who are here, it is legal for you to do so. But note that it's not a meeting. No votes can be taken, nothing like that.
Okay, um, based on the fact that we do not have a quorum, then I am going to adjourn the meeting. Okay, I I believe I have that authority.
Yeah, yeah, well, you have to adjourn the meeting to.
Okay.
Even less the quorum can adjourn a meeting.
Right, we're going to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty nine based on the fact that we do not have a quorum. For those people that want to stick around to to finish off the process. Um, Mister Kled or or Mister Winowitz uh, would be more than happy to listen to you. If nobody wants to continue, just let us know and um. We'll reschedule this. Uh, for our next meeting. So, does anybody want to stick around, Mister Kled, Mister Winowitz?
I I would just say one other thing just for.
Okay, let's hold on a second. For the for the record, Joanne, the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty eight, and we're just continuing.
Alan, you really want to make a motion to adjourn, have Rick second it, vote it, adjourn the meeting, or continue, then continue the conversation.
Okay, Rick.
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, uh.
Make a motion.
I'll make the, I'll make a motion. Rick, you make the motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I made a motion to adjourn, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it. Roll call.
I'm here, yes.
Alan, yes. Okay, meeting's adjourned.